We're recording.
All right, we'll call the monthly meeting to order at 7:00 p.m. Everyone has an agenda? Can I have approval of the agenda, please?
I shall approve the agenda.
A secondary?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have additions to the agenda? Nobody? Okay. Now, no conflict of interest declaration. Does anybody have any conflict with anything on the agenda?
Any discussion on the cell phone tower proposed, I'll probably have to back out of it because one of the property owners involved.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. Can I have approval of the minutes for April 14th, 2020?
Aye. Bruce?
A secondary?
I can second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions on those minutes? Okay. Monthly RCMP report.
We don't have representation here because our meeting is close to the public, but they said this is their report for the month.
Can you make a bigger slide? I think I may want.
I can read it off my computer if you want. So there was, for 911 calls, there was one disturbing the peace, one assistance files, four breach of conditions, three COVID-19, five harassment, two motor vehicle collisions, three mischief, three highway traffic act, nine impaired driving, one thefts, four uttering threats, one trespassing act, two suspicious person, vehicle, or property, one. So total interactions during the, within the town of Surrey for the month of April was 40. In their notes, they noted that their one impaired driver was charged within the town, one charge of COVID-19 provincially, theft of a dirt plate, been solved, no charges. I assume that means youth involved, maybe?
In person?
With emergency health order, we have been assigned, a member assigned at the war for arrivals of the ferry to assist health officials. This came from Sergeant Chris Gunn.
That was a very active.
This would have been before last week, so.
Wow, that's, that's weird.
So if somebody wants, if anybody has any questions, I can certainly pass them along to Chris for clarification. If not, you can.
I move that the police report come up later.
Okay, now, secondary?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Sergeant Gunn is quick to keep us updated on the callings ahead. Okay, general account budget update.
So you'll notice that this budget update is still the end of March, only because our auditors have to close out the year before we can open the new year. So hopefully by next month, we'll be, they need to come in and do some closing entries before, even before they start the audit, so. But it may be a little bit different than what you seen last month because any bills that came in that were, that would have fall within that year would be included now that weren't there last month, so. And Liz has inputted the new budget numbers, but she can't generate a report until we get some of the stuff out of this one, so. But you'll see from the checks written or the bills that are listed there, kind of what we've spent, so in the month of April when we get to those. Anybody have any questions? Anytime you do have questions, if you look at it later and you want clarification of where a number came from, I always say, give us a call and we can get that for you.
Okay. On sewer utility account budget update.
Why does that? I did it downstairs, it works perfect. It's hooked up to the projector or something. Modern sewer is the same situation. It's the, it's, it's, it's the March 31st, so. These numbers do look a little bit better actually because I know last month was still missing the last period of billing, so that period would be, now be built into these numbers, so. You'll see at the bottom of that one, it's a fairly significant deficit, but once some of the capital items are taken out in the year-end adjustments, that won't be quite that extreme. It is definitely going to be a deficit, but some of the bigger items, the capital items, will go into capital accounts. Does that make sense?
Okay, town of Surrey, general countables to be approved.
Not too much there. I don't need a motion to approve.
I move that we pay the $742.07.
I'm second.
Second.
Motion carried. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Town of Surrey water and sewer utility payables to be approved.
This one's a little higher, but we have the engineering fees for our treatment plant project on there, which is the bulk of that, so. And the Atlantic purification is lights for the treatment plant as well. Big enough for anybody to see there.
Okay, so.
I so move that we pay the town of Surrey water and sewer, $13,836.46.
Okay, now, a secondary?
I can second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, these are the water and sewer checks issued for the month during the month of April.
Bigger, anybody have any questions on those? The bigger ones there, the snow removal, that'll be the last of that for this year, hopefully. That would have been part of the contract. Anything that, if we happen to get snow after that, they charge us, so hopefully we won't see any more snow.
Hopefully not.
Federation dues, that's just an annual membership dues for the Federation of Municipalities. Airtime Electric, of course, always gets their good share every month. And some loan payments and just kind of date-to-date stuff, so. It's just checks written. Okay. Water and sewer is the same chain. I think there's CBCL, that's engineering. That's a combination of both the left station and the treatment plant, so airtime electric, those two amounts going to make up the bulk of those.
On to planning and developments. So we have some information. Public consultation from Bell for the installation of a 30-meter-high telecommunications tower at 9 Sterns Avenue. This type of development is regulated by Industry Canada. However, they are requesting input from the town. So we've got information, if anybody hasn't looked at it already.
I did attach some in your attachments there, but we did get kind of a hard copy information package that has one of the bigger drawings, if anybody wants to take a look at them. Basically, they're proposing to put the tower right behind their little building on Sterns Avenue. And we, Joanne can speak to it as well, but I've also, and I know some other, you've probably all heard about it, but residents in the area, basically all of them uphold the location of it.
I think councillor McDonald's been talking to quite a few, and I've spoke to a lot, quite a few of the people, and the residents just, they don't want it.
No.
I think they, they, you know, I don't really blame them. It's not a spot where I don't, I think, I don't think a tower should be going. It's too close to the, to the people's houses and fairly close to everyone there in that area. And it's a 90-meter tower. It's a big tower.
30 meters.
30 meters, sorry, 90 feet.
The first one was 60 feet or something.
The first one was supposed to be 20 meters and it was just going to look like a pole.
That's right, but now it's not.
So when this came out, my first response to them was, this is not what was proposed, or back in January. It was 20 meters and it just looked like a glorified post.
Yes.
And they said they realized that they needed it to be taller and that style is only made to a certain height, so they had to switch the style anyway, so.
What's wrong with down at the construction park?
Well, and when I re, after I brought it to you guys back in January, February, whenever it was, I responded to them and said that we don't feel, that this wasn't even the proposal then. They had asked for three properties. One was our CN Park. One was the land where we have the seniors housing project potentially being built on Anniversary. And the other one was our fire hall. Well, none of those were suitable. And I said, we don't see any of these three locations as being suitable. Our CN Park's used for activities. The land on Anniversary has a development proposed for it. And our fire hall is very limited land as it is, so we need to preserve what our little land we do have if they ever need any type of expansion to their communication towers or whatnot. But I said, we can look at something else. And their response to that was, well, thank you very much. I actually have the email, came from Mr. Demore, and he responded to say thank you very much, but, and he said, since we've been in contact with you, we have spoke to several other property owners that were willing to work with us on it, but we've decided that we're going to put it on our own land on Sterns Avenue because it would be more, all their infrastructure and everything is there and it would be less work for them. So that was, and then this package came out. This didn't come from, from Mr. Demore. This came from, they've hired a, basically a consulting company to do their consultation process. That's where this Jess Harper and some other names are, are in the package. They don't necessarily work for Bell. They've been hired as a third party by Bell to do the public consultation process, so. But any correspondence or concerns or opposition or people in favor of it are to direct their, to this Jess Harper. It's all regulated by Industry Canada.
Yeah, we've known saying.
At the end of the day, they're asking for our input. They're supposed to, they're encouraged to have support from the local municipal government, which would be us. But at the end of the day, Industry Canada has the final say. So you guys, we have until June 2nd to respond with our feelings on it and, and you know, if, whatever you guys want to say, we'll incorporate into that response, but, so. That's why it's been brought to you tonight, so that yous can discuss and decide how you want me to respond to this proposal.
Is there a picture in this paper here of the tower? I haven't seen.
Just a drawing of it.
Okay. Well, it is pretty huge.
There you go.
Yeah. I'm making it with the height, or is it?
It's on the screen. I have it up there.
I can't see it, but it's.
It's on the screen, I don't know.
And I think there's like a photo simulation of it. So here they show it, like a photo simulation out there. I'll make it bigger. That's what. So now.
Say, big it would be.
That's, yeah, that's the size. That's the, oh, real rendition of what 30 meters would look like.
So they never, they never fall, so.
They end to love it.
The height of that, if it falls in any direction, it's going to get hit in every direction.
What they had, it's, so it's 90, 30 meters or 90 feet, whoever you want to describe it. So their requirement was to notify anybody that lived within three times the height of the tower. So they basically had to lay the thing down times three and that swath of people all got a registered letter with this public notification with an opportunity for input. And they also had an ad, and they were supposed to, I didn't see it, they were supposed to also put an ad in the local newspaper so that all residents could see it.
Do we, do we have any account of what the people that that would entail? Like how many, how many people, what their votes were? Like, I mean, that probably should determine a lot, expecting people that are there, right?
We, we've heard from some. Thelma's heard from, she, Thelma reached out to some of the seniors in the area because it's very close to two seniors, but they wouldn't have gotten the letter because they don't own their properties. They're just renters. So that notification would have went to P.I. Housing for seniors.
I wonder, did you get any reports back that said they wanted it?
No, I don't know.
They saw you.
I didn't hear from anyone that said they wanted it.
I mean, I think everybody would agree, we want better service. We want the, like, the idea of it is, is good. Nobody's going to say that we couldn't benefit from better service. They do want it to be within a certain area to cover what they call like a, their sort of.
It doesn't have.
Like, they try to get in, in not really a dead zone, what would be the word for it, void? Basically, they're trying to fill in a gap, say, from their, this tower to that tower. So they do want it to be within range. That I read where they responded to, they, anybody that sends an email or anything to them, especially emails, they respond. And, and different people have sent me the copies of the responses that they've got. And one had suggested up in the food park, like where East Links is, but they said that would be too far east. So, but like one of the locations, when they suggested alternate locations prior to this, was the Anniversary Avenue property. So that's not much further west than the food park one would be.
Yeah, how delicate is it? Another, like, 1,000 meters and then it's no good? It wouldn't be that.
So.
If true gone, this one they got is 20.
Of what?
Yeah. If they were two kilometers.
Too far.
Yeah. It wouldn't work, but it's everything two kilometers.
Yeah, I think Thelma spoke.
Two ounces, two to Sterns is.
Thelma made a phone call, I believe, on behalf of some seniors, so she actually spoke to someone other than Jess and got some information. Yeah.
So the Justin Parker, the two kilometers?
Yep.
What I would suggest, and that's just my suggestion, you guys have to make the decision, that we respond to say that we've received a lot of concern from all of the neighbors in the area, that they don't feel that that's an appropriate spot. But maybe offer some other possibilities of where it could go. Because we do want it. I think we want the tower, we want the service.
Yeah, everybody would.
Have any more options, if you have?
Well, I mean, if you're looking at the, say, the industrial park, you probably want to be kind of on the higher up portion of it. If you get down into the hollow, you're probably looking at any taller tower. Industrial, the industrial park, meaning Lee Crane, is what I'm talking about.
And is there any, would there be any charge or any, you know, like if you put it in your land, they have to pay you so much for that?
They'll lease, yeah, they'll lease land.
And that's, and that's what they had, when they approached us initially,
they were willing to have a lease drawn up. I mean, I wouldn't expect it to be big money or anything. They're really looking for a small piece of land and then access to that land, right way to it. I was kind of looking at the map. So we, the town, own some property on Lee Crane, but our property tends to be a bit further down the hill, like down by Burnet Place.
Lower ground.
The province owns a piece of land between Darryl Robinson's shop and the McLean ready mix. They had purchased that piece of property years back when they were going to put the school in there. So they had purchased that as an alternative, alternate access to the new school that was going to go in there. But they purchased, like they, like I said, they had purchased it before the things, before that went by wayside, so.
But I'm sure if there was a lot, if there's opposition for people who want it and you won't help them out with some land and that, who would you say, the Industry Canada, who is it that has the file?
Industry Canada, which is federal.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm sure they're going to support the town's recommendation. I think if everybody, if everybody was on the same page, I would, you know, I don't think they're going to pick the power place over the town. I would think they would be responsible, they'd give the recommendation from the town. And that would just make it the best matter for the everybody's.
That's why I need to voice, voice our opinion and write a letter and tell them that we're, yeah, people are opposing the portion of land where they want to put it and maybe we could come up with another alternate.
Like, I think if we could provide some alternate locations they could look at, whether they be town land or, you know.
Just when they're, when they're going to look at.
Like, in a, in a commercial, or not even commercial, because it was on a main street or something. One of the other lots they looked at was the corner of church and main street where the old Chamar was, right on main street.
Oh, that's great.
So you have to be careful where we give an option. You can't move one neighborhood to one neighborhood.
No, like somebody, somebody says, well, one bit up by the water tank, well, then it's a year back.
Yeah, there's going to be another 25 people.
But if it was down in the industrial park area, that's industrial. And that's, that's the place for it, is an industrial area, or up by the food park.
Or up by the ring.
Or in behind the ring somewhere.
Close to you, I'm sorry.
I don't think so, I wouldn't mind if it was behind the ring.
Behind trees or something.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind one bit if it was behind the ring. It wouldn't bother me. We'd probably be the closest property, but it wouldn't bother us anymore. I might actually be able to answer cell phone, there is a hand right now.
Was that right?
No.
I talked to Lawrence in college a bit.
Yeah.
And he made a couple of phone calls back. He said that he should have sent the information package to him. And he was having, one of his people reviewed. He said, right now, not saying anything, but we're just going to wait to see what happens.
Yeah.
So I think at the end of the day, he'd be.
Behind us, probably. So what's in the dust? Could we pick a four or five place and tell them?
Well, I mean, we don't need to decide those tonight, but I mean, I could draft up the letter and over the next week or so, we could come up with some ideas. I can include those as possibilities for them to look into.
That's what I guess.
And, but, you know, and I know that Thelma has collected some letters from people in the area. I have some emails and stuff, and they've gotten emails, too. I know that they've, they've sent, I'll look at emails to, I'll send to them.
We couldn't do a petition, we can't do COVID.
Yeah, yeah. So when they have allowed more time, usually it's only 30 days for public response back, but they've allowed it, they've increased that 45 days because of the situation that we're in. So the 45, so the 45 days is up June 2nd.
Do they want to go to the soonest they can, you mean, like tomorrow?
There's a whole, I don't know if you read through the package, but there's a whole like 120-some day process that they have to go through and this is just the first of that, so it's not easy. You're not going to see the tower go up on June 3rd or anything like that. There's still another process they have to go through after this, so. This is just kind of step one. They did, I think in part of our letter, too, would be that they resend us that map with some measurements on it, like with some setbacks, like how far away are they from the neighboring property? They don't tell us that on that map.
And they give you the height?
They give us the height, yeah.
Is it 2 feet wide, 14 feet wide?
Yeah, so they, they do give that on the base, but it doesn't say we're 25 feet away, say, from the Lutz's house and, you know, and then you have the Samptons' house just on the other side of them. It doesn't give those dimensions. So we, I think we should ask for those clarifications. We do have within our development bylaws, there's a, for property that joins, commercial property that joins residential property, there has to be either a 15-foot area where there's nothing or they have to be able to put up some type of a fence or something that's going to hide it. Well, you're not going to be able to hide that.
No.
You know, but apparently they do, and I got correct to go check it out, too, they, they well have their 15-foot buffer.
It must be off the coast.
Yeah.
Not a lot of space up there.
Yeah.
And one of the residents, the Santa letter, had some health issues, had some health concerns also to go with that. So that's something that should be taken into consideration, too.
Yeah, like they, and, and they respond and they say, you know, these are, you know, these health considerations have been taken into consideration, basically. And the towers don't give off any, the certain levels that they have to be within. And structurally, there's certain structural, like necessities that are, because it's like a freestanding tower, it's not one that has a lot of guide wires or anything on it, so, you know, one of the concerns from a resident, what happens in an ice storm when that thing fills up with ice and either ice starts flying off of it or, God forbid, the thing come down. No matter what way it goes, it's going to hit some of these houses. But they, again, they had responses to all of that, you know, it's all built by structural engineers and, and they take into account the winds that we would get in this area and they, they take all those considerations. There's no lights or anything that would reflect off of it that would bother anybody. You know, they seem to address all of those things, but still, we, we can put them all in our letter.
There's thousands that come down across the world every year. I'm sure they were well studied up and all the proposals, so they think of that, so.
Well, anyways, and, and I've heard from residents that they, they have talked to councillors, I don't know which, could have been any one of his, and they said, you know, we, we feel that the, the town is on our side and we appreciate that, but we just want to let you know, so they know that we're.
Yeah.
We should send a letter, if there's anything, for considering upgrading.
Yeah.
But we don't want to, where you propose the product, but we have three options, and different options.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Go from there.
So you make that motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I have a secondary?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we ask a question on that now?
Yeah.
Just, we'll have to be careful, I have three that, that we don't, don't throw them in there and say, yes, we're all for it, and then we get somebody else that's against it.
They would still have to go through this process.
Okay.
If they move it to another location, they would have to do this over again.
And we'd be doing the same thing back to you. Most satisfactory to us.
I can assume so, because that's the process. That's all regulated by Industry Canada, too, this public notification process. If a municipality or city doesn't have any regulations, it defaults back to the regulations that are in place by Industry Canada, which are probably more stringent than any town or city would have anyways. So they have a lot of things they have to meet and public notification is, is one of the key ones. So at the end of the day, if there's a dispute, Industry Canada makes the final decision.
How high is the one at 800?
I was going to look that up. That one's quite a bit higher. Something tells me that one's like.
110 or 120?
Meters.
Yeah. Here, feet.
Not more, it's more than that.
110 or 120 feet?
I can look it up for you.
I'll look it up.
No, I was thinking about it, too, and I just got sidetracked and didn't.
And you don't really notice that because it's got nothing.
Well, it's in, it's in an industrial area, it's where, where it should be. Like even, you think about, you drive into Surrey and you see, you know, the St. Louis Church and nice kind of rooftops or whatever, and now this is going to stick up the Great Man. and nice kind of rooftops or whatever, and now this is going to stick up the great middle of all that.
We don't need that.
Okay.
So we have a motion and we have a seconder, so all in favor?
Aye.